Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us. We just pray that you will go with us and direct us. And pray that your will be done in each of our lives. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, we have two people sign up to speak. Mr. McDuffie, you want?
First, I'm sure. Thank you anyhow, just a few short seconds. I think I'm here like a lot of other people. You're not going to see this many people in any Saturday morning board meeting anywhere in the country properly. But I'm here just to express my gratitude to the whole board, the administration, for what you all come to our school district and what you continue to do. And I think one of the best districts in this part of the world. Thank you.
And then the second one, Mr. Lindley?
Good morning, everybody. How are y'all? I'm here to do the same, support my support for everybody here, the teachers, the students who've come here. I really love this district. I love everything that y'all do. I love the support that everybody's showing this morning. I need it more and more. Each meeting, this needs to be a more reoccurring occurrence. So that's all I ask, is keep what you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move to item number four, which is consideration of the consent agenda. Any discussion on consent agenda?
The only thing you should have your corrected version of the elementary campus improvement plan with page 18. There was a word that said decrease, and it was supposed to say increase. So in front of you is that corrected version.
I would like to pull it because I want to ask some questions about it.
Sure.
The campus plan.
Okay, so we're going to pull the campus plan, and we'll open it up for discussion after we approve the consent agenda. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
So be it.
Okay, a second. Those in favor, raise your hand.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the consent agenda.
Everything but that, okay.
Yeah. Those opposed, those saying? Six oh one is Mike of St. So we will open the campus improvement plan for discussion.
Okay. There was really more than just an increase and decrease. There was a number of changes. There were several words in there that were changed. So I guess my question is, was it put on the site for the committee members to see, if the public to see the changes that were made? Was it noted that there were changes?
Well, it's not going to be posted on the site until the boards approved it. The committee members, the teachers, parents, community members that served on the committee were there at the last meeting when it was explained to them, I think multiple times, that the plan they were passing was the plan that would be presented to the board. So I don't know how.
Well, I guess my question is, were the final plans agreed upon by the committee, and were the committee members notified that that was going to be the final meeting? And did they know? I mean, I'm sure they were notified of the meeting, but did they realize it was going to be the final meeting and they were going to be going over everything all together as they grew?
With the board's permission, can I let Ms. Zduski and Ms. Hurst speak to this question?
Sure. Okay. At our last meeting, whenever we came up with the plan together, and we said the next step is we take it to the board for approval, and we won't be releasing it to anyone until the board gets whatever approval.
But I asked the question, were the committee members notified that that was going to be the final meeting to decide on the campus improvement plan? Plans, not just one, but all of them.
Did somebody complain from someone?
I'm sure. There's three or four of them here. She's pretty, you know, close to tightening with, so I'm sure she's got something to just come out and say it, Carolyn.
Come out and say?
Say what?
Like, did somebody complain about it?
I'm asking a question, were they notified that that was the final meeting? I know that my daughter-in-law was on the committee, and I don't believe that she told me that she realized it was the last meeting.
You don't believe her?
It was just a notification, it was just a notification that it was the meeting.
They knew when they came to the meeting that it was the final meeting, and we discussed at the very first meeting the process of the campus improvement plan from the very beginning. Here we have our needs assessment. Here we set up the campus improvement plan. Here we go over the goals, and it all ties into this one system. And so when we had that meeting, we went over every single one of the goals and told them that this is what would be taken to the board.
I don't think that... I'm asking you, how many committee members were at that last meeting? And were they aware that it was the last final meeting? That's what I'm asking.
Everybody except for four.
Excuse me?
Everybody was there except for four.
Every committee member was there except for four?
Yes. And that was the month before, whenever we had originally scheduled, I believe it was in December before the break, to work on our improvement plan. Not many people could make it, so we canceled and rescheduled so we could have as many people there as possible, with as many hands on it as possible.
Okay, so do you have documentation and a signed sheet of who was there?
I do.
Okay.
Move to accept the campus improvement plans as per.
Second.
Motion second to approve the campus improvement plan. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven oh. Move to item number five, Campus and Administrator Report. Mr. Ross?
Another activity to get to this morning. First off, the secondary campus, looking at our enrollment numbers, we're actually down one student a month. Two oh nine down to two oh eight, one seventh grade student. We elected our Bulldogs of the Month. Since we changed the meeting, they're not here this morning. Our junior high girl was Riley Morgan. Our junior high boy was Cage Lee. The comment about the two of them, they stood out on doing a really great job with their effort and had such a positive attitude to start the semester. Our high school girl was senior Emily Bowman. Emily's always cooperative and respectful. She works hard in class and is always willing to help. Our high school boy is freshman Carson Carter. Carson's very respectful and a hard-working student in everything he does, and he would not have been here on Monday either because he was showing down in Houston. Our Employee of the Month was Ms. Debbie Leroy, one of our high school mathematics teachers. Debbie goes above and beyond the classroom with her students. It shows when they exhibit how much they love her. You can see the care she has for her students when you're in her class and the care the students pay for her as well. And so it goes back and forth. Since our last meeting, both our boys and girls basketball teams finished, wrapped up their seasons. Unfortunately, both of them lost in the first round of playoffs, but another banner year, hanging banners, and both of them were in the playoffs. The boys were the third year in a row, and I think the girls were seven or eight years in a row. So good job by both of them. Softball and baseball both started their seasons, of course, as long as Mother Nature cooperates. It has not been the easiest situation to get around. At the time right now, baseball, we're hosting a tournament, and we played two games yesterday. And if you get an opportunity, I know the weather's not the nicest out there, but they play at 10 o'clock this morning and at 6:00 this evening. Last night softball was supposed to have started district last Tuesday, postponed to Wednesday, postponed to Thursday, finally got in yesterday, and they started the district. One and O with a seventeen, seven, and a third. We've also had students represent Iowa well in Ag the last couple of months. Did well in Fort Worth and San Antonio. In Fort Worth, Andrew Cunningham showed a goat and received first in her class and was a reserve division champion from the premium cell. In San Antonio, Jenna McDougal was ninth in her class with her goat. Zoe Campion was eighth in her class with her pig. Both young ladies made the premium cell with their animals, so being represented well. Also, another big honor and last thing I have is our FCC LA members, which are led by Ms. Gina Enman. They went to regional competition in Galveston February 14th, 15th, and 16th, and she took three teams down there. They presented, and out of the three teams, we have two groups that qualified and are moving on to state. The group of Alyssa Costello, Bethany Cutrell, and Bailey Morgan are one group, and then Matt Farr and Jared London also. So both of them, both of yous will be competing later on this semester, so I'm extremely proud of them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to start with our Bulldogs of the Month. I invited them to be recognized officially at next month's board meeting, but until then I'm going to also have a special kind of cameo for them, for each kid, and our Employee of the Month on our website until they get recognized officially. But I just wanted to read their names. Our kindergarten Bulldogs of the Month was Danny Haney and Jonathan Chote. Our fifth grade Bulldogs of the Month, Cooper Morgan and Shaylee McCowen. And our Employee of the Month was Isaiah Barrera. So like I said, officially, next meeting they'll be here, but they're going to be on the website until then. Some really fun stuff that's been going on at the elementary. Last week, we had Aggie Land Safari come out, and was that this week? I can't remember.
This week.
Okay. They're all blending together this spring break. Aggie Land Safari came out. It is a new attraction that'll be in College Station. Ms. Shann McCowen organized for them to come out to our school for two days. They were here in the afternoon, the second half of the day. They saw every grade level that we had, got a baby kangaroo and little baby goats. It's a lot of fun. So we got to go in there and play with those. The kids loved it, teachers loved it. It was a huge hit. Also, our second grade students were invited for the second year in a row to par hats for little heads. College Station and Bryan schools were invited, and they also do outreach to some of the smaller schools out here. So we were invited again. It was at Reed Arena, and it was presented by a lot of the different health organizations in College Station and Bryan, and they promoted helmet safety. They talked to the kids about why you need to wear a helmet when you do different sports, what happens if you don't. They had in football players and baseball players, softball players, a question team there to talk to the kids. When they got back to the school, every kid got a brand-new helmet to wear. So hopefully my second grade boy will wear it. So let's see. Also, this week was Dr. Stu's week. The kids again had a lot of great fun. Every day was a dress-up day. It's promoting reading and just a love for books. Also, the last few weeks, PE has been promoting the kids' heart challenge. They've raised so far over $4,000, and that's just with the online donations. That's not including the cash and checks that are going to be coming in later. So doing a lot of really good stuff there for the kids. And I believe that's all that I have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Zduski. Ms. Hurst, do you mind turning on the projector for us, please?
Super Dennis' report looks a little different than it normally would this month, simply because there's some things that I've heard or seen, and I just want to make sure I'm keeping the board informed. That is one of my main responsibilities. It's good to inform community members as well, so I'm glad so many people are here today. One of the topics, and I'll try to keep this brief, it's Saturday. Everybody has a pot of coffee at home probably to drink, maybe a doughnut if you're lucky. So I'll try not to drag this out for you, but one of the things that I want us to be cautious of as a board and as a community is comparing tax scores to star scores. There's a whole lot to that, and essentially, it'd be like comparing apples to oranges. And I'll try to show that a little bit now. My concern is, I don't remember how many years ago, four or five years ago, Dr. Jones addressed this very issue when it came up for him, and he did it through a numerical way where he was showing that, you know, the different scores from the different tests and what the passing standard was. And what I mean by that is, what's a kid have to make on a test? How many questions do they have to get correct in order to be considered passing? And that's different for both tests. That's different from what it was during the tax years to now, and it's increased a little bit. Essentially, what I'm saying is, if I took the tax test, I would have to get, let's say fifty out of a hundred questions correct. I have to make it fifty, and that's considered passing. Now, don't quote me on these numbers, I'm just giving some examples. Now, in the star test, it's increased a little bit, so if on a hundred-question test, I might have to get fifty-five questions correct in order to be considered passing. So you can see, if you've got to get more questions correct, it already throws it off from apples to apples to apples to oranges. Does that make sense? Now, Dr. Jones did a great job addressing that, and that situation died off for a couple of years, but it's reared its head recently, and so I want to make sure I'm addressing this again. But I'm going to do it in a different manner, kind of along the literature line of it. What you see here is a side-by-side that's on TEA's website, and this was printed, this was produced back in September of 2010. So thank goodness TEA was telling us educators, hey, something different's coming in the future. Be prepared. And TEA will do that for you. That's the one good thing TEA does, is they prepare us. They prepare us for what's coming. So, and may not be able to read these, and this is a multi-page document. Again, it's Saturday morning, I'm not going to waste all your time, but the bullets here say, well, over here in the column says rigor of assessment, so difficulty of assessment, correct? And the first bullet says, overall test difficulty will be increased by including more rigorous items. We're going to make the test harder. Questions are going to be harder. The second bullet says, the rigor of items will be increased by assessing skills at a greater depth and level of cognitive complexity. In this way, the test will be better able to measure the growth of higher-achieving students. Again, it's kind of saying the same thing. It's going to be more difficult. In science and mathematics, the number of open-ended grittables, see, that's that educational term we're going to throw at you commoners. Grittable, it's a grittable. We don't like grittables on Scantron tests. Because you think about it, when you took a test, all of us in here have taken a multiple-choice test, and in math, you can kind of work that problem, you can get close to it, you can go over here and pick out what, I'm going to guess this one because that's the closest I got to it, right? But now they make some of them grittable where you have to write in the answer you came up with to debunk those numbers. A little more difficult. So that's TEA telling us back in 2010, the test coming, star, it's going to be a little more difficult. Okay? This is an example. I'll read it. This is a tax test question, this is a star test question. Says, on Friday, the low temperature in Nome, Alaska was negative 12 degrees Fahrenheit, and the high temperature was 23 degrees Fahrenheit. How much warmer was the high temperature than the low temperature?
Take the high temperature, subtract the low temperature.
One-step question, correct? Pretty simple. Over here it says, Damon wants to spread wildflower seeds in a rectangular field that is 60 feet wide and 70 feet long. Each package of the wildflower seeds covers about 175 square feet and costs $6.95. Which of the following amounts is closest? Already, they're throwing us off, is closest to the total cost of the wildflower seeds Damon needs for the field? So he had to figure out the area, six times, there's 42 square feet, and he's told that each package will cover 175 square feet. So he takes this total footage and divides it by 175, and it's 24. And this next step might throw you off if you read 795. It said, we trained our kids where it says closest, just around 695 to 7, do the easy multiplication, and there you have it, 168. 168. That, gummit, 168's not on there. How's that throw a third, fourth, fifth, sixth grader off? So, trying to prove my point. It's not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. Now, interesting enough, and board members, you don't need to write this down, I have the articles for you, and I made copies for you guys for your leisurely reading liking. This article just came out last week in Texas Monthly. I'm going to read you this part right here. Leading educators and testing experts have studied the exams and find that they are asking kids to understand passages in two or more years above their grade level. It's a broken test. We've got teachers in here, we've got some teachers in here, and you guys bust your butts every day to try to get kids where they're supposed to be, don't you? And then for a testing expert to come out and say, well, guess what? Your third grader, in order to pass that test, is going to have to answer fifth-grade-level questions. Or your fourth grader's going to have to answer sixth-grade-level questions, and so forth. Doesn't seem fair to kids, does it? So star, tax stars, is not apples to oranges. After that, after this article came out, this article came out, and it's from Texas School Alliance. Interesting article because it refers to the Texas Monthly article, and it says, what are we doing? What are we doing to our state policy? How's this going to affect our state policy? Because guess what? What we're required to do as a district comes from the state, and it's based off how our kids score. How's this affect your local communities? These test results affect your real estate. We have a realtor here. Does your test scores not affect your property values and whether people want to move to communities or not? Look, that star test is affecting that. A star test that is written wrong. School districts, phew, it's affecting us right now, isn't it? It's dividing our community, how we're performing. Parents, how many in here is parents? Any of your kids get stressed about the star test? And God bless them because we want them to take that star reading test. It's written wrong. It's written too hard. And we're letting it divide us as adults. Teachers, teachers, I know you're in here. How many of you stress out about state assessment? I know I stress out about it. These educators back here raising their hands about it. And then most of all, at the top of the list, kids. Some kids are being mislabeled because they're failing a test that's written too hard. And we keep talking about legislators are setting public education up for failure. Prime example, and now they're caught. So we'll see how that looks in the spring of 2019. Now, I'm sorry, I had to throw this one in there. Poet, I can't answer questions on Texas standardized tests about my own poem. This is a true story. I couldn't make this up. And you see what she said here, when I realized I couldn't answer the questions posed about two of my poems on the state assessment, I had a flash of panic. They used this poet's poems on the star test, she looked at the test questions, and she answered them wrong according to the state of Texas. But we're letting this test divide us. The results of this test divide us. We can't be doing that. It's not apples to apples. Something I've heard, I heard a teacher say it, and I thought a little bit about it, and then I heard a non-teacher in the community say it, so it made me think more about it. So it means it's going around the community. After third grade, kids are reading to learn, not learning to read. Give you a second to wrap your head around that. So meaning K or pre-K, pre-K, Ms. Wheaton's here, pre-K through third, they're learning how to read, the phonics of it, digraphs, sound, letter sounds. But after third grade, they're reading the passages just to learn the material. It's not correct. And that's why I want you guys to hear this, in case you've heard it in the community. It's not correct. These are the ELATs. They were adopted in 2017. They're going into effect next school year, fall of 2019. These are for fourth grade, and again, this is on TEA's website. But you see, all this right here is reading instruction, how to read still. If you go to the next one, fifth grade, all of this is still learning to read. Now, teachers know this because our teachers are going to textbook adoption, and they're reviewing these new TEES to make sure our, when we adopted a curriculum for ELA through eighth grade, that the new adoption covers all these TEES. So this is jumping out at the teachers, and they realize this. But if you hear somebody say this right here in the community, it's not completely correct. It sounds good, it's very catchy, but it's not correct because in fourth and fifth grade, our new TEES for ELA next year, expect those teachers to still be teaching those babies to read. Reaching all kids, this is hard. This is hard, and I don't envy teachers that have to do it. And we keep talking about this, and we hear a lot about this in the community. It is important for us to reach all of our kids. And unfortunately, in education, we get to start grouping kids, and we'll group them low or medium or high, and then the easiest thing to do is teach the kids in the middle and hope some of those lower babies are getting it, and try to find something to keep the high babies interested and not bored. This new system I've been talking about is why we have to reach all the kids. Let me share this with you. Our new accountability system, the wonderful A through W, where the state wants to take everything you're doing as a district and put one letter grade on it. Are you kidding me? We've got a million great things going on in Iola ISD. A million. And they're going to give us one letter grade for it? That's not fair either. But in it, there's three domains. One of them is student achievement, and the way they calculate it, see, we have our kids, when they meet standards, they fall in three categories here. Approaches, which is passing. Meet grade level, which is doing a little bit better. Or get mastered at. You knocked it out of the park. See, but we keep talking about, we've got to reach all our kids. Why? Because that first domain, student achievement, uses all of these percentages, all of them, for that calculation. It is imperative we're reaching all our kids. That's just domain one. Remember I told you there's three? The third one is student growth. And here you see those categories, approaches, meets, masters. But it takes them to affect all of these because one of the new measurements is that a kid has to show a year's growth. And you see this calculation over here? Well, approaches, that kid passed. Amen for that kid. That third grader passed that fifth-grade test, right? That's what we can say now, according to that article. But they grew just laterally, if you will. We don't, we get half a point for that. If they show significant growth, we get a point for them. See, we're getting into, we're counting kids and points. That's what's messed up with the system, too. But it is what it is. It's the rules that I have to play by, our principals have to play by, and our teachers have to play by. And that's why it's important we support each other because we're fighting a pretty hard battle here. But again, I'm sharing this with you because it's important that we reach all our kids. This, again, is the closing gaps thing. This is, this is why it's important, too. There's something that will be coming about in August 2019, in addition to our accountability system called targeted. It's not a thing right now. I even talked to TEA this week, and the first thing the guy told me when it came to targeted, Mr. Morneau, no one in the state of Texas is targeted right now. And I said, well, why is that? He said, because it's based off three years of data, 2017, 2018, and 2019. We're in 2019. We haven't taken any tests, so they don't have three years of data yet to determine if we're targeted or not. But I put this on here anyway because, again, imperative that we're reaching all our kids because this right here, in the closing the gaps performance in targeted, up here in academic achievement percentage that meets grade level or above meets. Well, I'd stop right there. That accountability measure is only looking at these two groups. It doesn't even consider these. Imperative, we're reaching all our students. So, again, I just wanted to make sure we're being cautious about some... So, again, I just wanted to make sure we're being cautious about some of the things going You can see, tax sets the STAR test as apples to oranges. TEA told us that in 2010. But if you look at that old accountability system with tax, your accountability rating was based off how many kids passed the test. That's it. Now, we go and then we look at subgroups. And what we mean by subgroups is whites, African-Americans, Hispanics, economically disadvantaged, but it's still, did they meet passing standard? If they did, here's your accountability rating. Shows you today, there's three domains to the new A through F system, that wonderful system gives you one letter grade for three different domains put together. And it's pretty difficult. I only shared two of the domains with you. The third has to do with school, your comparison schools. And so how you performed on the test related to how many of your kids are economically disadvantaged and where you fall on this spectrum. So to go back and compare those accountability ratings from tax to ones of STAR right now, that's not just apples to oranges. And the best analogy I could give you is apple to lasagna. Because there's lots of layers to lasagna. There's lots of layers to the A through F system. Okay? So again, my job to keep the board informed. I hope this has helped you guys. I hope this helps some community members see what's going on. I think that was the last slide I had.
I did have a question, Mr. Martell, on that. All these schools in Texas have the same standards, correct? As far as the STAR test? We all have same standards, same tests, same everything. And some schools are performing really well with the, with the test, right?
True.
Okay. And Iola ISD, I think this is the concern. Iola ISD with the new STAR test, in 14, 15, for example, 15, spring of 15, our scores were in the 90s in reading with the new STAR test. Average three through sixth grade, I can tell you exactly what our average was on here.
I bet you can.
I can. And I'm telling you that a concern in this community is why with the new STAR test and in 14, 15, have our scores started to drop?
Probably because we've got teachers not teaching the plan. We talked about this.
Yes. Oh, how do you know that, Rhett? Excuse me? How do you know that the teachers aren't? We have good teachers.
I'm not saying we don't.
Well, are you saying the teachers are not teaching the plan? I'm telling you what happened. Curriculum changed. I can tell you what happened. Curriculum changed.
Ms. Ushy, would you like to address the curriculum change? My understanding, you are, let's just talk about, you're referring to some third grade reading scores.
I'm talking through third through sixth grade.
Sure. Let me speak to make a point here. You continue to go back to this curriculum change, and that's not the cause. But we're talking about some third grade reading scores from two years ago. Well, I think, forgive me, if I speak the wrong number, I think it was 48% of that standard. That group of third graders, K through second, had the very curriculum that you keep defending.
Yes. And I'm saying that the teachers in kindergarten with that same group of kids were begging for help with those kids, knowing they were below level, knowing there were discipline problems. They begged every year for help with those kids to split. So that again, could have helped the situation, is what I'm saying.
So kindergarten, we saw the difference in a group of kids.
Well, this year's test was what?
It was the difference in a group of kids.
This year's test for third grade was what? 73% passing. 73% passing. Well, okay.
So, I'm sorry. You're, no, go ahead, Ms. Ushy.
I was going to say, those third grade teachers did a wonderful job because when they had gotten there, they did a lot of growth with them to make that 73. We would like that higher, but when they're coming in around 60% reading on level and then they jumped to 73 by the end of the year, having to read not just on level, but even possibly two grade levels higher. That's a lot of, that's a lot of growth those teachers made, those kids, and they were towards that.
I think that we have very good teachers. I'm not saying anything against the teachers. I think we have very good teachers.
I don't think I've said anything negative about teachers today, have I?
Excuse me?
I haven't said anything negative about teachers today, have I?
Well, I don't know. I think in the open meeting last time, you said it's not the program, it's the teachers. You said that in open meeting, on video, I watched it the other day. You said it's not the program, it's the teachers. That's what you said.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six. Consideration of Grimes County Special Ed Shared Services Agreement.
What you have in your board packet goes before each school board in the co-op, which is Anderson, Iola, Navasota, North Zulch, and Richards. It's operating procedures that we agree to as a district being in the co-op. That being said, I recommend that you approve the Grimes County Special Ed Services Arrangement Agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. As presented, those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Item number seven. Consideration of Approval of the Tazbe Localized Manual Update, 112.
Okay. So you guys know that we typically get, or often we get Tazbe policy update. This is 112. The updates were there, nothing really jumped out at me. The only thing I will speak to real quick, just to keep you informed again, is on page four, an instruction that speaks to the school providing instruction to high school students, secondary students, related to interaction with peace officers. So the state of Texas has placed that burden on schools, secondary schools. And we are to train kids in how to interact with peace officers. And our locally, Mr. Ross and Ms. Harris are putting a date together and a plan together so that gets done in March. So, but again, with that being said, I just recommend that the board accept the policy as presented.
So, Luke.
Okay, motion is second by Luke. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Item number eight. Consideration of 2019, 2020 Academic Council.
I think you guys have had a chance to look at it, some of the things we've talked about, making sure school ends second to last week of May so that our kids can be ready for the fair. And also Saturday graduation, which would allow families more time to travel and get there and possibly keep our kids safer the day of graduation since it will be Saturday morning and not Friday night. With that being said, I recommend the board approves the 2019, 2020 Academic Council.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion is second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Item number nine. Consideration of Changing the Day of the Regular March Board Meeting.
This was in there, I was asking that we consider changing the board meeting from March 18th to March 25th. March 18th would be the Monday right after spring break. So that would require Portman Spatia to be up here to make sure the agenda gets out in a timely fashion during spring break. So that was the original reason, but also we've now bumped this meeting. We just ask that we move that meeting to March 25th. Just my recommendation, change the March board meeting.
So, Luke. Second.
Second by Mike. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Item number 11. Consideration of Superintendent's Evaluation. Wait, 10, sorry, 10. Evaluation. And we'll go to closed session at this point. We'll do an evaluation. We'll come back to open session. I don't think we'll be too long. All right, we're going to, we have shared our results of the evaluation with Mr. Martell. We're moving to item number 11, which is consideration of this contract. So we have several options. We can take no action, we can extend his contract. That's really the only two options we have, so.
So I move to extend his contract one year currently, so.
Second. Motion is second to extend his contract by one year. Same terms as previous, no revs.
There was one term there that was taken out. Last year's contract had that I would be provided a laptop or tablet, which I did not get and I don't need, so that was removed out of my contract.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, 6-1 with Ms. Mallard opposing. We'll move to item number 12. Personnel, do we need, do we need to go to closed session?
No, sir. Just, you see there that Hannah Fornier submitted her resignation. She just wants to focus on family and being the best mother she can be. I think we all respect that.
Okay. Need a motion to accept Hannah's resignation.
So.
Motion by Tammy. Second by Luke. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Just need a motion to adjourn. I think you know the order.
So, Luke.
Second. Motion is second. All right, thank you all.